Okay, we'll call the regular city council meeting, March eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, to order right at six thirty. We do have a quorum, there'll be two council people not here tonight. We will say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. Pledge of allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
How are you, Mr. Scanlon? All right, next we'll have reports from council. Councilman Ed Waters.
I've had a comment from several people that they're concerned about people riding their bikes and things through the intersections, you know, saying they've almost hit several of them, and they just wanted us to remind everybody that it's against the law to not stop at these stop signs, whether it's a golf cart, a bicycle, electric carts, whatever. So, we sure would hate for something, you know, tragic happen to some of our residents. We were contacted by the Galveston County Health District, who controls Galveston County Animal Control. It's time for the renewal of our contract with them, and they will be letting us know what the new fees will be when it comes up. Also, also, they are renovating their facilities. And all the municipalities that participate and use them, they want us to contribute to that renovation. So, at this time, I'm asking them, you know, how much do we actually use you in a twelve month period? So, I can see, you know, so we can all talk about, is it worthwhile for us to continue that? So, I'll be letting, I'll be bringing that to council here in the next thirty days.
Okay, thank you, Ed. Rick Fisher?
All right, well, they had a parks meeting last week, right after the dedication of the parking lot, I'll give an update on that in the parks. But, I was gonna say, happy birthday, Mike, and welcome to the new world of zero.
Oh, he got a warm welcome, all right.
Yes, he did.
All right, Rick, thank you very much. Alex Scanlon?
I had a productive meeting with Mike and Colliers for the next roads and drainage project. The parking lot went pretty smooth, hopefully the next road goes smooth as well. I think we're on a good path, so thanks, Mike, for putting that together.
All right, thank you, Alex. I don't have a whole lot to report, just, we did have a ribbon cutting at the parking lot. I felt that was pretty necessary, since that was one of the biggest projects our EDC's ever funded for the city. Johnny Boltinghouse cut that ribbon, deservingly so. There were a lot of people there, we had a good turnout. John Schaefer opened up his restaurant early that day and fed twenty-five of those people free of charge at his restaurant. So, that was, that was a pretty nice little gift of him to give back a little bit, so I want to give a shout out to John Schaefer. I know we're waiting on some pictures. I sent an email again today, where are the pictures? So, hopefully, we'll get something out there about that. I'm gonna turn it over to Police Chief David Donaldson.
No report, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, sir. How about City Administrator Mike Cram?
Thank you, Mayor. First, we've gotten reimbursements from Texas Parks and Wildlife for the design phase of the boat ramp project. Cheryl has collected all of those. We've closed out that first phase grant, we're just waiting. I know you hound them at least twice a week, but we're still waiting on them to give us the go-ahead to apply for the second phase of the grant and move forward with it. FEMA reimbursement has also been received for Darrell, for Hurricane Barrel debris disposal reimbursement. Cheryl is still waiting on about seventeen hundred dollars in administrative, what they called CAT-Z costs. So, we'll be working with them to finish that up. Cheryl has also prepared a request for proposals for debris collection contracts, which she will be advertising next week. That has to comply with federal advertising guidelines of thirty days. So, the open period for bids will be for thirty days, after which, we will be bringing a proposal to council for a debris collection contract, in case we have a major storm in the area. And that's, I did hear, I was gonna jump in on one report from a committee. I got a text from, or a phone call from Thomas today about roads and drainage and economic development. And so, economic development, he said, we didn't really have any much to report. We did have a presentation a little over a week ago from someone who's wanting to purchase the old art forum at seven seventy, I think it is, Marina Bay. And then, on the roads and drainage side, we had a little hiccup on the scope of the project for Narcissus, for everybody's edification. Narcissus will be our next major roads and drainage project. We met with Colliers, as Alex said. Colliers will be bringing us a proposal after they do a preliminary study for the needs of both drainage and reconditioning or repair, replacement of the road. And they don't think that it's gonna have to be a complete bedding replacement or anything like that. They think the roadway's pretty solid, but they're gonna bring, they're gonna actually complete a study on it before they can scope the project out, and we'll go out with an RFP on that project as well, once that is done. Other than that, we're waiting on may elections on the bridge, and we're hopeful that that roads and drainage, our roads and bridges bond passes at the county level, so that we can get our bridge rebuilt.
Yeah, thanks for that update. I want to reiterate that, too, I'm glad you brought that up. Whoever you talk to in the may election, we need to vote yes for, for that bond to go through. That bond's gonna get Clear Lake Shores a new bridge with a pedestrian bridge at zero cost to the city. So, go do some marketing for us, get us a bridge, since we don't really have the money to pay for it. Be nice if we got someone else like the county to pay for that. It's in May. And we will, we will, Suzanne, thanks for asking, we will be building that up as we go and giving updates on that, because we're not gonna have one here, but you'll have to go over to Kima or somewhere in the location to vote for that. So, if y'all need me to bring the motor home and gather a bunch of people up, I'm willing to do whatever I gotta do, just to get y'all there to vote, 'cause, 'cause we really want that to go through. And like I said once before, I haven't got a hundred percent clarification on the fact that, that the county believes they can do it with, within their current investments, and possibly not raise any tax at all to any citizens. So, that would be awesome if they could do that. Moving on, we will go to parks.
You know, unfortunately, Mary can't be here tonight, spring break, and she took the kids down to the beach. Did have a parks meeting last week, just a couple of things that came from that. Parks Committee just completed doing the flower beds over in DePaul, replacing a lot of the plants and everything that didn't come back from the freeze. It's a priority for them, they wanted to get it all done, so it's looking nice for the Sunrise Service on the twentieth. And they also wanted to say thanks for all the committee members that came out on Friday and did all that. There's also currently an opening on the Parks Committee, so the city's taking applications through May twenty-eighth, March twenty-eighth, I'm sorry. So, if anybody is interested in getting on that committee, please go to the city's website and do the application there. And this will be a short term, this one will end on September thirtieth when it comes back up for renewal. Other than that, that's about it from parks.
All right, thanks, Rick. Waterfront compliance?
Nothing from the waterfront.
Okay. Planning and zoning? Anyone here from planning and zoning? Would you like to step up and give a report for that?
No report, to my knowledge, nothing to report.
Okay. How about zoning board of adjustments? Anybody here from there? Alex, are you on that committee? No? Well, you're on most of them, that's why I'm asking.
I've been on all of them.
I'm just asking. Okay.
No?
Okay. Civic Club report? Joanna, you got something for us?
So, Civic Club would like to thank the city and all of our sponsors for the support for the Cajun Cook-Off. We had a great turnout, and it was very successful. We also had a turnout the other day for our quarter. Upcoming minutes, we have the Trash Bash on March twenty-ninth, that's the cleanup for the island. And we're on sale, see, by March sale is on April twelfth, and we're paying applications for that, five dollars per household. So, we decided on the different white place. He's great, not for the Clear Lake Shores Kids is on four nineteen, and Sunrise Services is on four twenty. So, we'll be having the Sunrise Service in the park looks great again for that, so thanks for that.
Okay. Thank you, Joanna. Moving on, we have a scheduled visitor, item number eight, Megan Laburns, Barefoot Girl Yoga. You wanna step up to the microphone and tell us who you are and what your address is?
Megan Laburns, five twenty-nine Clear Lake Road.
You kinda gotta speak right into that thing.
Oh, sorry. Five twenty-nine Clear Lake Road. I have paperwork for y'all. Kinda handed you.
Thank you.
I have lived here for, ooh, let's see, thirteen years, I think. My husband and I have lived here for thirteen years. I had Barefoot Girl Yoga right at the front of Clear Lake Shores a few years ago. I had to close because of COVID, sadly. I've been a teacher coach for twelve years, but I retired, thank goodness. But, I was, I wanted to do donation-based yoga here in the mornings on a, I have Monday, Thursday, but I could do a day that, if that doesn't work, I could do that. And that's my clients that I've given you guys, the top, or the ones from Clear Lake Shores that, that I still am in contact with and come to my classes. And then, the bottom is, and I've given you what they do for a living, they're all retired teachers, NASA engineer, at, you know, stay-at-home moms. And I know them all personally, and I have their phone numbers, addresses, all of that. And then, the next thing I have in there for you guys is, I think, my, about my waiver, so everyone fills out a waiver. And so, I get all their emergency contacts, things of that nature. I'm five hundred hour certified yoga teacher, trainer, and I have that in there, and I have personal liability insurance, and I've attached that card there for you guys. But, that's pretty much it. I know you guys probably have questions, comments, I don't know.
So, Mayor, if I may?
Sure.
So, Megan came to see me with a proposal, actually a request, to see if she could begin using the clubhouse on a regular basis. And pardon the frog in my voice, I think it's still recovering, even though I have. She was inquiring about using the clubhouse on a regular basis and to teach yoga to both our residents and any members of the public who wanted to come, who may have been her, her clientele in years past. Originally, when she came to me, she, the reason I was gonna have her come to council is because she wanted to make a presentation and ask for the use of the thing at a somewhat of a reduced rate from the two hundred and whatever dollars it is per day that we normally charge to rent the clubhouse, because she was going to charge for the classes. And I said, well, we don't typically allow use of that for any kind of a money-making venture. And she said, well, what if I just put a donation jar up and don't ask for any kind of money from customers, and then whoever wants to pay me something can? I said, well, put a, put a proposal together, bring it back to council and ask, because they're probably gonna have some questions for you. So, it is a little bit of an anomaly. I don't know what the history is of the clubhouse use when it comes to donated services, but I know council hasn't typically entertained anything that was for profit, so that's a little background on, on how we got to be here.
Okay. Does anyone from council have any questions for Megan?
So, you're just, you're just doing this for fun, not for money, twice a week, teaching a class to twenty people for, just, just for fun?
Yeah, usually not twenty people.
There's not gonna be an expectation of donations every single time?
Whatever people want to donate, I love donation, if they feel like donating, they can. If not, I'm just here. It's Sava, it's called Sava, and yoga, we give back to the community.
It just, it just feels like this is a, an, I mean, if you wanna run a business out of here, I think it needs, I think it needs to be leased, that, that's where I'm at on this.
Oh, that's fine.
Anybody else?
So, in, in doing this, you're just, you're just asking to just be able to use clubhouse, or you were talking about doing it at a reduced rate? What, what did y'all come up with on that?
So, originally, it was going to be her requesting some sort of a reduced rate for use, since she'll only be using it for a couple hours, a couple times a week. But, as we started talking, she said, well, what if I just ask for donations instead of charging per head for admission? Would that be something council would allow me to use it free of charge if I didn't actually charge an admission? And I said, I don't know, make the presentation to them and see.
Yeah, because I know Beth does yoga here on, in the evenings, and that, you know, I, I don't really know Beth that well, but my friends have told me she comes and does yoga for donations, so I don't, I don't know.
We, we went through the whole, this place isn't clean, this place is a disgusting pigsty, we need to raise our rates to pay to clean it, and having people here, I mean, they're gonna be using the restroom, I think that's realistic, whether or not it's, it's free or not, but that's, we're, the city's gonna have to clean it afterwards, so you're gonna have to provide a cleaning service, and I don't know that the city would agree to allow it to be self-clean, 'cause we've gone through this whole deal like four times, so I'm, I'm just not sure that opening up the clubhouse to be used multiple times a week for extra persons without a cleaning service scheduled, Mike, is a, is a good idea, 'cause I think it's gonna put us right back where we, where we were, what was that, a year ago, six months ago? I mean, what, what are your thoughts on trying to manage keeping this place clean, saying, saying we did that? I wasn't aware there was other things happening in here. So, that's a huge demand.
There are, there are some, some pretty standard meetings that occur regularly in here. We already have a cleaning service that comes in once every week, and the clubhouse is part of the cleaning service. She hits the bathrooms and that kind of stuff, and I know that she had to do a little extra one-time cleaning, because somebody left the kitchen in a wreck after they had rented it, and had to clean out the warming oven. It took her about an extra hour and a half just to scrub that out. But, it hasn't really been a problem, Alex, as far as, because of the types of people we have come in here, it hasn't been a big messy issue. We have more of a problem with the larger events, where they rent the clubhouse out and have a lot more people in here, with cleanliness and that kind of stuff after the fact. Not so much the volunteerism. I've never gotten a complaint from the one resident who actually teaches the yoga classes in here, I've never gotten a complaint from the Civic Club after they've used it, or the Yacht Club after they've used it for their meetings. And while they have standing deposits, they don't typically pay rental fees for it. So, it's, that's kinda why I wanted to bring it here, because we already do it for several other people. And so, I, I wanted to see if council was willing to entertain it with any more, or if they wanted to renegotiate the ones that we have existing now, or how we wanted to skin that cat moving forward.
Mike, can you elaborate on several other people using the clubhouse that you know of? We, we just rent it, right, for events and things of that nature?
We rent it for events, but we have a standing deposit for a few groups. The Civic Club has a standing deposit, they don't pay a rental fee. The Yacht Club, to my knowledge, is the same arrangement, they don't actually pay a rental fee, they have a standing deposit. And so, those groups already exist, and then we have, my understanding is, we have somebody who uses it for yoga instruction already, and I don't think she pays any kind of rental fee for it. Because it's, it's a donation-only basis, it's not meant for her to be an income earner, so to speak. So, when Megan said, what if I just choose to do it for tips or donations, I said, well, make the pitch to council and see if they're willing to allow it. But, I do think if, if we wanna go back and, and I can do some more research and find out if there's been a perpetual problem, I'm, I'm not aware of what it was a year ago, Alex, so forgive me for that, but if we just wanna table this and make me do some homework on it, that's fine, too.
Okay. So, the Civic Club's kinda part of the city, they, they buy all the chairs that are in here, they purchased a refrigerator, so they're a little bit different entity, not an individual. So, not picking on you, but I have a question, 'cause I do my homework when things come to this. So, I decided to look, look you up and see what you do for a living. So, there's an advertisement here, Megan, that says, Monday, nine thirty, and Thursdays, nine thirty, location to be determined, and the cost for the class is twenty dollars an hour. Can you explain that to me?
Yeah, that's my website, I haven't updated it recently. I was at a different location for the past four or five months, I was using my friend's barn. So, I need, I would need to update that, donation-only class.
So, to me, when, and I'm, I don't have a vote in this, I'm just talking to council and to you guys, I have liability insurance, because I run a business. There's really no other reason for you to have liability insurance. So, when I see this advertisement, Megan, forgive me, it looks like you're running a business.
Gotcha, yeah.
Okay? 'Cause, 'cause you're already advertising for the same days you're asking us for.
Right.
And, and location to be determined makes me feel like you're waiting on our decision before you tell your clients where you're going.
Correct, yeah.
And, and to Mike's comment, the, the other lady that I, I know of that does the yoga is strictly for island residents, and I believe that was what was negotiated. I was not the mayor at the time, nor on council when that happened, but I believe that's, that's what was negotiated with, with her deposit and not charging anything to rent it, because it was a free service to islanders. You're gonna be bringing clients from both on the island and off the island. That still looks like a business to me. That's just my opinion, you guys don't have to listen to me, but that's where my stance is on it.
Yeah, I, I think if this is gonna move forward for me, it, it would have, I mean, a reduced rate makes sense, I think, for probably maybe more than just this application, if there's lots of other similar things going on, that's a whole can of worms that, it has been opened, I guess, as part of this conversation, but I, I think that'd be probably better for the city, for me, Mike.
So, so I will say, I do know that the other lady that uses it in the evening, or whatever evening she uses it, we have meetings, and she gets bumped all the time, because what the city has comes first. So, that, that might be a problem for you, too, because any city event that comes up and/or any rental that comes up, you get pushed out. So, regardless of what your schedule is, you get a phone call and says, hey, we got an event, we rented the clubhouse. So, you don't get preferential treatment, there we, we treat people the same. If you're not renting it, you get bumped, so I don't know how that's gonna affect your clientele. You, you obviously got quite a few people, not a lot more than what I see out here in four or five golf carts in an evening.
Well, can I ask you a question? Could I rent it out, and it, you guys wouldn't have an issue if I paid whatever fee for the month, or is that not even something that...
I would say we're not renting this building for a commercial business would be my stance on it.
Right.
That's me. Like I said, it's really up to these guys.
That's not something we've typically, typically done in the past. You know, it's, this has always been, yeah, just more of a thing for, for the residents, you know, just to, you know, and obviously, you know, for the city to use, you know, for official business, and they do court in here, and we do a lot of, you know, Civic Club events in here, you know, it's, I'm, I'm kinda on fence on it, too, just, you know, on the one hand, I think if we're allowing somebody else to do that, come in and do a class for donations only, and, you know, she's a resident also, you know, it's, you know, it, it wouldn't be fair to deny somebody just based on that. But, on the other side, though, having, you know, a off-island clientele, you know, is that such a big deal? You know, again, just for, you know, donation-only like that, said, I mean, you're obviously a resident here on the island, and you, looking at your list, there's a number of, of people that'd be interested in this class that are residents on the island, too. So, I don't know, I think, I don't, I think we need to discuss it a little bit more, instead of coming up with the decision tonight, that'd be my opinion.
Well, I don't, I don't think the way it's on the agenda, we can vote or do anything with it. You guys can talk to her about it and, and visit about it, and then it would have to come back to another meeting for actions, is that correct, Dick?
Yeah, that is correct, 'cause it's only on there as a presentation.
We may, we may need to update if we're gonna entertain this type of thing, for this example or for others, something in our fee chart, because I think it's like all day or a half day, those are the only two things we even have set up right now, we just have never even thought about.
Yeah, we don't have anything more than daily rentals.
So, that's part of my purpose for bringing this forward this way, is because only council can adjust councils' set fees. So, like, you're right, this wasn't brought to you for an action item, this was brought just as an open discussion to start the dialogue, so that I know if it's something you wanna even entertain, and if so, I need to move forward with some negotiation and a contract. I've already talked to the attorney about it a little bit, about what would be required in any kind of contract, including a, any kind of fee decision that the council would come up with, but it's, it's really, at this point, just a discussion matter. To me, I see it more as a, as a policy decision that the, that the council wants to make, that if you choose to open it up and someone either runs a business or does it for donations, you know, what, what requirements are there? And I think if you're looking at it from just a, you know, like a philosophical standpoint is, does it provide a benefit to the community? And if it does, then perhaps that is when you entertain more of a discounted rate, rather than, you know, if it's not, and it's something that's, you know, not a community-wide type benefit that could benefit, you know, the public here on the island, then you wind up charging the regular rates. Plenty of cities do that, I mean, if you decide to entertain it, then, you know, we'd have, I, I would come up with a, with a better waiver that we have for people that actually come and actually rent the center, so that it covers the city better. But then, you know, there'd also need to be a, I, I think you can also satisfy your concern about dealing with the cleanliness part by having a reasonable deposit that's down, and if, you know, if they leave the place trashed, then, and you gotta use an extra hour and a half of help in order to clean it, that that would be pulled from the deposit, and then you'd require the deposit to be replenished, you know, if that ever happened. I mean, those, those are the kind of things that other cities go through if they decide to rent out, you know, community centers, and, but that's really a, a policy decision that, that this particular board needs to make.
I've got no issue making the clubhouse more available to be used in general. I mean, it sits here empty all the time, I mean, that's, I think that's probably a good thing, but does that open us up to any, once we allow that, is it a case-by-case basis we have to approve? Or, does it open it up to somebody wants to come and, I don't know, start a tap dancing class in here, and, you know, like, well, oh, you can't do that, because it could damage the building, well, I'll put mats down, I mean, that's just a crazy hypothetical, but what, what level of control do we lose by doing that?
Well, they are, I mean, well, you, you have the control. I mean, ultimately, that's what it comes down to, and whatever parameters you set, then Mike can interpret it however you set those parameters. I mean, you know, if he thinks it's gonna be something that'd be detrimental to the community center, I doubt he would approve it, you know? And, and if it got appealed, they could certainly come and make a pitch to council and say, this is why they think it may work, or something, so, but ultimately, council is, is the gatekeeper of who comes in this building and for what purposes. So, but that's, that's up to you. It, it depends on how, you know, often you want the community center to be used, or whether you don't want it to be used. I mean, I, I understand it, but that's still a, a policy-type decision as to, you know, whether there's a community building, that how much use is actually used by the community, so that's for y'all to determine.
Yes, come up.
I'm Suzanne Hubbard, nine fifteen Hawthorne. I've taken classes for Megan, and unfortunately, I haven't in a while, but she is the most incredible yoga instructor I've ever had. And I've been here in the evenings, too, it's good, but Megan, oh my gosh. And I want to thank the attorney for your words, there's obviously a lot more that needs to be talked about, so I'm hoping you will table this for now, and perhaps realize it's another opportunity for the city to make money if you are charging her rent. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you Suzanne. Y'all have any more questions for Megan tonight? Maybe even better that we, we have the other two council members when we do discuss it too and get some of their thoughts.
No, I don't have any more questions. I have, uh, no problem with Mike going ahead and, uh, start to, you know, see what kind of agreement would get worked out, you know, whether it be, uh, you know, is free for donations or, you know, just a, a nominal, you know, monthly charge for using it, uh, you know, two days a week.
Well, there's some merit in bringing a policy, uh, to council. I like where Dick has gone with that. I can bring a policy forward that Dick and I can prepare and, uh, with an accompanying release or liability release from the city. And it's very common for cities to give that type of decision-making authority to the administrative staff at some level with an ability and a policy for an appeal to the elected body. And so, uh, you know, I've dealt with that for years and years and years. So that's, that's an easy thing if council trusts us to, to bring something like that forward. That could probably simplify this process considerably and kinda clean it up. Uh, because we've probably got some stuff that we could clean up in the existing process as well.
I don't, I don't think you need to make a motion, I think, I think-
Yeah, there's, there's not really a motion to make on this particular item, but we could come back with something and maybe put it on the next agenda to see if y'all want to adopt such a type of policy or not. And we can give some more thought to it and-
I would rather not guarantee the next agenda. I've got a full plate right now because I'm out, I'm out this week and I'm out part of next week to, to go to a class, but-
Yeah, this is my last meeting of the week, so.
I will get it together in the coming weeks so that we can bring something back to, so she's not left waiting and wanting and, and we can have a direction to move forward.
I, I think the council just needs to decide, what do you wanna open it up to do other things than just events? I mean, I think that's where you start. And if that's the case, then you come up with a policy to do such, you know? All right, do you have anything else you wanna say?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you Megan, appreciate it.
All right, we will move on to public comments. At this time, any person with city related business may speak to the city council. If the topic of discussion is related to an item on the agenda, the comments may be made now or at the time the agenda item is discussed. If the topic of discussion is not related to an item on the agenda, the city council cannot deliberate or take any action at this time. Comments to, from the public should be limited to maximum of three minutes per individual and there will be no yielding of time. Would anyone like to address the city council? Nope? Okay, we will close the public comments. And we will move on to item ten, consent agenda, uh, check register in city council meetings from August, or August, March fourth. Do we have any motions on that item?
I make a prov, um, a motion to approve consent agenda items A and B from, uh, March fourth.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Got a motion from Rick, got a second by Ed. Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Move on to number eleven, new business discussion of possible action may be taken on the following items. Item A, ordinance twenty dash twenty-five dash O two, the city of Clear Lake Shores cancellation of general election to be held May third, twenty twenty-five. Mike Cram.
Mayor, council, this is purely administrative so that we're making the official declaration that we don't need to hold an election as only the incumbents signed up for the upcoming race.
Hey, we save some money. Just saying, we save some money. And you have your same council members and mayor back for another couple of years, so that's a good thing. So you didn't say anything about that?
You haven't received my letter of resignation, so it's a good thing.
Hopefully we won't.
I didn't get that memo.
Well, it's, it's been about a year, so that's about the right timeline for us.
Always gotta have a smart comment, huh? Do we have, we have any motions on item A?
All motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty-five dash O two to cancel the general election on May third, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, got a motion by Alex.
I'll second it.
Got a second by Rick. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Move on to item B, resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero one, a resolution of the city of Clear Lake Shores for mosquito control by the Galveston County Mosquito Control District. Mike Cram.
This is just the mosquito control district of the county asking for a resolution from us so they can continue aerial spraying.
Yeah, I'd strongly recommend that we approve resolution, uh, make a motion, we approve resolution twenty twenty-five zero one, uh, for a mosquito control.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Got a, uh, motion by Rick, got a second by Ed. Any more discussion on that? All in favor? Motion passes. Uh, we'll move on to item C, review and approve interlocal agreement between the city of Clear Lake Shores, uh, Texas and Texas City, Texas for the use and services of the Texas City jail personnel and jail facilities. Uh, Mike Cram.
You know, we, as mayor and council are aware, we don't have our own jail. Uh, we have a contractual agreement with the city of Texas City. Wherein, uh, class C misdemeanor prisoners that we arrest are housed there for fifty dollars per, per day. Um, this is just a renewal of that agreement with the current chief and staff involved. And it requires council approval as it's an interlocal agreement between two governmental entities.
Okay.
I make a motion that we, uh, review and approve interlocal agreement between city of Clear Lake Shores, Texas and Texas City, Texas for use and services of Texas City jail personnel and jail facilities.
All right, got a motion by Ed.
I'll second it.
Got a second by Rick. Any discussion?
Just, uh, one quick question, I'm just assuming the rates and everything are gonna stay the same, uh, for this, uh, next, uh, period that we're proving for?
Yes.
Okay, very cool.
You good? All right? All in favor? Motion passes. We'll move on to, uh, item D. Uh, council to review and make decision on keeping current CPI rate or adjust rate according to the Public Utility Commission of Texas, twenty twenty-five Consumer Price Index, adjustment to municipal telecommunications, right-of-way access line rates. Here's an opportunity to make money, guys, no, I'm kidding. Mike Cram?
So this is just, as it says, a CPI adjustment that would allow the city to charge higher rates for usage of our existing right-of-way, uh, located infrastructure. Um, in twenty twenty-four, I guess, council chose not to increase that rate of usage fee as it's typically gonna be passed on to the customers. Um, so if we, if council chooses to adopt a higher rate, um, it will go from ninety-three cents for residential to ninety-eight cents and from two dollars to two oh nine for, uh, non-residential. As I said last time, council voted on this, they voted to abstain from increasing or choose not to increase. Um, as I think Christie told me, the, the impetus for that was not passing the rate on to the users who are basically our citizens. It's a rental fee basically for the infrastructure use in our rights of way.
So does council wanna do anything with that or do we wanna leave that where the current rate is at this time? You have any suggestions for council, Mike?
Uh, I don't, Mayor, it's purely a, a decision by council. It's, it's a mod, it's a nickel increase. I mean, it's, it's not something anybody's going to feel one way or the other.
Is it a ni, a nickel times what? I, I don't quite understand the rate, I don't think I, like, it's, it goes up a nickel, but a nickel what? Per kilo lot, per linear foot of right-of-way? I couldn't quite make sense of it. I'm just really mainly curious more than anything.
My topical understanding of it, it's for the rental of our rights of way so that they can place their infrastructure, whether it's per linear foot or what have you, I don't understand. I think it's per residence or per household. I think it's an individual basis. I don't know that it's a linear foot basis. I'd have to go back and do some research. If council wants to table it until I can do that, that's fine.
Do we have any idea what that additional income might be?